Welcome to the April 12th meeting of the Manhattan City Commission. This is a work session and that means that the city commission typically discusses items in greater detail and no formal action is taken, but general direction can be given. Work session items are eligible for public comment at the end and individuals should address all comments to the commission. Each person has five minutes and there's nice to see a crowd here this evening. So, thanks for coming. You'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The only item on our agenda this evening is to, and I'll just read it, it's a report and recommendations from Alan Gibbs-Hulick, L.C., or A.G.H. for short, of Wichita, Kansas, regarding the city's classification and compensation system, external market analysis, additional pay and work/life balance policy review, performance management system, career development, and employee benefits survey, also called the total rewards study. So, at this point...
There, I'll introduce Carrie Cox. Carrie's a senior consultant with A.G.H. and has led the study effort, so Carrie, welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate the time to be able to present to you all today, the work that we've been doing in conjunction with the city leadership and human resources to go through this total rewards study and process and make recommendations for revisions to the classification and compensation We did some work initially with the city in 2020, looking at the division of finance structure and some of the work that was being done because of some turnover challenges. So, we have a little bit of a longer relationship with the city and understanding of some of those challenges that you have had with recruitment, retention, and being able to compensate employees from a total rewards perspective. So, we felt like that gave us some good insight and into the history with that relationship that we've had, where we've been able to look at that structure of finance back in 2020 and make recommendations for them to strengthen up their processes and their systems and staffing as well. So, in our discussion today, we're going to focus on four key areas, the purpose of this study, the process that we undertook, and our key recommendations, and then just very briefly touch on next steps for the process. So, in regards to purpose, we recommend that organizations undertake a total rewards study or compensation review periodically, so that they can have a sense for how does the market pay for certain positions, and then also looking at classifications of systems within the organization and how are positions compared across different departments. So, the last study the city did was back in February of 2014, and it was updated from the original compensation study that was done or developed in 2006. So, it has been some time since the city had undertaken this kind of review and process. So, we were tasked with looking at the total rewards, so that it would align with some of the city's organizational excellence initiatives, O.E.I. And particularly, we were tasked with looking at the pay and performance evaluation and benefits. So, the goals coming out of those O.E.I. initiatives are to have competitive base pay for all positions using a job classification system and pay ranges that you adjust annually to keep up with inflation, that we know is a big concern these days that we haven't seen in prior years, and then also have a moving middle range for the positions of those grades. One of the other pieces of that is we want to make sure that our employees have financial recognition for their work performance by giving them increases in their annual pay, and then also providing an employee evaluation tool that aligns with that pay-for-performance or merit system. In terms of the benefits aspects, the city wanted to better understand the benefits offered in the local and regional marketplace by all of the different employment sectors, and then recommend any enhancements that we might see for that. So, I think we all know some of the challenges that we currently are facing in the current talent environment, but I think it really helps to understand some of those in a little bit more detail as to why it's really important to have a competitive pay practice and system, as well as really good benefits for your employees. We are in a time period of really low unemployment again. So, as of April 1st, nationally, unemployment is at 3.6%. So, those numbers are about as low as we've seen in some time. In February of 2022, 4.35 million workers quit their jobs across the country. That's the highest number of workers that have quit in a month's period of time since they've tracked those numbers. So, that tells us that people are very open to different job opportunities and they're leaving their current workplaces to seek out other employment elsewhere. That means we have wage pressure, so there is a lot of movement for a $15 minimum wage, for example. There are a lot of openings and not enough people to fill them, and so employers are seeing the challenge of the need to increase pay across all industry sectors that we work with. And we have some demographic shifts happening too, so we see more people heading to retirement. We see changes in just the workforce population overall, and we know there are fewer people in our workforce available to work and to work in organizations. People are working more flexibly or with different types of jobs, so they're not all working in employers like they used to. So, basically, that just tells us that we have a lot of challenges with finding people and keeping people, because there is so much competition for the talent that's out there in the workplace. And we understand that this has impacted the city. You have a lot of vacancies, you've had turnover, just like all organizations and all industries that we work with, and you have a number of pending retirements. So, currently, you have 58 employees that are eligible for retirement today, and you have another 40 who are eligible for retirement in the next five years. So, we're looking at about a quarter of your workforce that could retire now or in the next five years, which just creates more challenge with some of the talent recruitment and talent retention efforts that we see. So, in looking at total rewards, we're talking not just about compensation or not just about employee benefits, but also things related to an employee's well-being and how they see work and that value exchange that they have. When I think of this, one way to think of it is what an employee gets from working for the city in exchange for what you give that employee is what we're looking at with total rewards. So, if an employee comes to work for you, they get a paycheck, they get employee benefits, they oftentimes get things like developing their career, training, those aspects, paid time off, work-life balance, flexibility in how they do their work, and recognition are all pieces of that total rewards. So, it's really about setting a strategy for a system that provides both the monetary compensation, the benefits, and then the other pieces that are less tangible that employees get from their work here at the city. Different organizations approach this in different ways. So, it is unique how people look at this and how employers will treat this. Some may put a heavier emphasis on compensation, some may put a heavier emphasis on benefits, and others may look at the different aspects and weight those more heavily. And in government, traditionally, we have seen a little bit of a less, little less emphasis, excuse me, on compensation through the years and more emphasis on some of the employee benefits and other developmental aspects. And that's shifting. So, you're competing for talent in ways across industries and against companies that you didn't have to do before. And that's why it's really critical to assess total rewards, not just for the city compared to other local governments and other city-type environments, but across all industries. You have individuals here that could go work for a for-profit company and get paid potentially significantly more than what they're getting paid here and still get some pretty good benefits. And so, it's critical as we look at addressing the need for changes to the compensation and classification system for us to look at all of these different pieces and parts. Our work focuses primarily around the compensation and benefits aspects to some degree. The recommendations that you'll see here today are primarily related to compensation, because we saw that what you've done with employee benefits here and some of the paid time off policies, you're very competitive and sometimes leading when we look at the city of Manhattan compared to other local governments and also for-profit employers. So, the fact that you've done really well in those areas over time allows you to be pretty competitive in today's space with those aspects of employee benefits, such as health insurance and paid time off and different pieces like that. The piece that we see the most need for changing is really in that compensation space. So, that's where we'll focus today on our recommendations. So, in our process, as we looked through the total rewards strategy and assessing that, we had an initial project kickoff with HR, city management, the leadership team here, and just met with them to get a sense for what are the challenges that they're facing, what are some of the things they'd like to see change within the compensation and classification systems, and just to outline our process and what the needs would be from leadership and/or employee inputs. From there, it's really critical that we understand what the jobs are at the city. So, we engaged in a process for employees to provide input to us to update their job descriptions. So, that allows us to have a really good sense of what they actually do in their work, the skills required, the experience required, so that we can compare those positions here at the city to other organizations as we look at market data. In that process, we collect market data. So, we had 27 different organizations that we were able to collect data through open records requests. Most of those were local governments, 13 of those were in Kansas, and we also reached out to other cities in neighboring states. For particular departments, we thought it was critical to have a better assessment of like cities. So, for instance, with community development and airport operations and those different unique kinds of departments, we thought it was important to get inputs from different cities that were probably more like Manhattan, but were external to Kansas. We also looked at a couple of databases that we have access to. So, in the work that we do, one of those is a paid database. We can access industry-specific data, geographic-specific data for positions for compensation, and then we also look at data from the Bureau of Labor Statistics nationally and local to Kansas. We reached out to some of your local companies here in Manhattan, so getting a sense for for-profit business, we thought might be important for some of those departments or positions that maybe were more competitive with for-profit business. I will say they are not obligated to respond to us, so we did not get a lot of data from them, but certainly from our database, we were able to look at some of those comparables too. And then we go through a phase where we're conducting analysis. We're looking at what are the pay rates for the positions, how does that compare to your current positions here? Then we start to make some recommendations around what we are finding, where if we see positions that are paid significantly less in the external market, from what you're seeing here, we would make recommendations to increase pay in those positions. The other piece we did in the analysis phase is looking at how you classify, how you classify positions and how those compare across the department, so I'll get into that in a little bit more detail in a minute. We have presented several iterations of our report to HR and city leadership and made some recommendations and revisions to those recommendations as we've gone through this, and we felt like we've landed on key recommendations that will really make the city competitive for talent across not only local government competition that you have, but also for-profit industry externally. We think it's really important for you to have that high level of competitiveness in your wages for you to attract and retain the best talent. So, key recommendations revolve around a revised classification system, revised pay plan, pay-for-performance system, and a couple of recommendations around employee benefits for consideration. The classification system allows us to have an internal way of looking at positions and evaluating them across the organization, and the pay plan allows us to incorporate those recommendations into a competitive market pay structure. So, in our classification system, we, as I mentioned, went through that process of job description updates. So, employees were able to provide input and supervision reviewed those inputs to get us the best possible descriptions in writing. We will provide all of those back to the city so that those are on record going forward. In that process, we also looked at consistency across departments for naming conventions. So, for instance, we might have an equipment operator, 1, 2, 3, in another department, we might have a position where they might call that a senior versus a 1, 2, 3. So, we just wanted to make sure we had some recommendations for you around that consistency. The primary piece of the classification system that we focused on are what we call compensable factors. And compensable factors are just a way for us to look at particular job attributes or characteristics for positions that give us a way to evaluate those positions across the organization. So, if I asked you who gets paid more, a legal secretary or a CAD tech in terms of how we value those positions or the market pay, you might say, gosh, those are really different positions, how do we go about that? This is a way that we can use a system so that we can assign values within different levels of compensable factors and look at how those come through in the organization. So, the city has used compensable factors for some time in their classification system. We went through and really focused on, is this working, which we received input that it was. So, we didn't want to recommend significant changes or differences. We really focused on updating them to make them a little more current, since the system was last revised in 2006. So, the seven different factors that we landed on, you see here, we have knowledge, which would be just the skill, the experience, the education that's required for the position. Responsibility has to do with how much planning or policymaking would be involved in a position. Leadership is as it sounds, are you leading people, which could be formal or informal, training might be involved in that too, and different levels of supervision. Problem solving is as it sounds, how much problem solving is required for the position in terms of the day-to-day work that is done. Work impact was one that we thought was important to add this go-around. So, what impact does an employee's work have on other people that they may work with or others within the city or others, not just at the city as an employer, but your citizens that you're serving as well? Collaboration has to do with how much customer service is being offered by the position, the types of interactions someone might have to have, and also the type of influence they might need to have in the role that they do. And then working conditions would include the physical aspects of the job, but also risk to health or life potentially that you might encounter in some of your positions. So, when we look at these, we're able to review positions and have a sense for what level of knowledge, what level of responsibility, leadership, problem solving, work impact, collaboration, and the type of working conditions are in every single position in the city, and that would allow us to create a structure and a system and a hierarchy, if you will, for positions across the organization. So, that was a pretty significant piece. We did have a lot of HR and department leadership input as we worked through that. The next piece that we have to incorporate is the compensation part of it. So, I tend to refer to designing a compensation system or structure as part science and part art. So, the science part is the data, the best practices, the evaluation of those internal factors that I just reviewed, the compensable factors we talked about. Those are the pieces that we have real data we can look at and start to form a structure for you. The art part is making it all fit in a coordinated way that makes sense for the city. So, as I go in and work with organizations and help develop their systems for pay, I start with my general data and I start with best practices for how wide a range should be, or how far between midpoints different grades should be, how much overlap between ranges should we have. So, there are some basic guidelines that we have for doing that, and then we have to get into the creative aspect of it, where you have some unique positions. You have some positions that are more complex because of the work that you do here compared to other cities. So, we recognize that there would be some discrepancies, and some of the positions, when we look at market data, maybe don't align exactly with how we value them internally here at the city of Manhattan. So, it's important for us to really understand the positions themselves, the organizational structure that you have, the different value of each position, because we want to make sure that we can put together a system and structure for you that really makes sense for this organization and not just some kind of cookie cutter approach. We also recognize we're in a talent market right now that is very different than anything we've seen in a lot of years. And so, generally, when I work with local governments and put together a pay structure, pay plan, pay strategy, it's tended to be a little less aggressive than for-profit industry would be. And oftentimes, the reason for that is government has offered much more employee benefits to the employees. In this talent space that we're in, we recognize there's a need to be very competitive with wages across industries. If you're competing just for talent against other local governments and trying to model your system compared to other local governments, you'll be behind. And you're competing for talent across industries, so we thought it was really important to be competitive in this labor market today, not just in the traditional government space and how that's been approached. So, as we looked at revising the pay plan, the data that we collected, if I just share some average and median data for you, when we compare your positions' minimum pay to other positions from all of those cities we looked at, it didn't look like you were so far behind. So, on average, you were at about 99% and median-aligned too. So, 99% of pay at the city compared to the other organizations we looked at. But averages are averages, right? We can manipulate data in all kinds of ways if we choose to. So, if I dice that down a little bit more, you had the position that I would say most out of alignment with market was only at 42% of current market rates for that particular position. Now, on the other side of that, you had a position that was 126% of market rates, when we look at just the minimum market pay. So, 99%, if we're looking at the average or the median, doesn't tell us the whole story, and so that's why we don't share a lot of those little details, because you're going to see such a wide range of positions, where some of the positions you have here are comparing very closely to market pay rates and minimum market. Some are above, some are below significantly. And so, as we make our recommendations, that's a consideration for us. How do we make sure that we align internal equity plus those market pay conditions? What we landed on was 21 different pay grades with a defined minimum and maximum. So, this is similar to what the city's been using, those open pay grades, where we don't have a defined step system, and we thought it was important to keep that as a recommendation, making sure there's flexibility for pay adjustments based on that pay-for-performance model we're recommending. As we compare positions and the average minimum change and average maximum change, it's 14% increasing on the minimum. Again, averages, that doesn't mean every position will see this change. And at the maximum, it's going up just 5%. And you would probably wonder why the discrepancy. As we have looked at changes to the pay structure, it was important for us to condense some of your pay ranges, just based on best practices, but also thinking about movement through the system. So, we see more of a, or I should say, we see positions at the lower end of your structure that have a little bit more narrow of a range versus position at the high end, they're a little wider on their range. And the reason we do that is because generally, when you're an entry-level position or in a lower-paying, lower-range position, you have more ability to move through your pay structure as you promote. So, we made sure that within your structure, it is clear that we have some ability to see those promotional opportunities and career development opportunities for individuals. If you're in a professional or a management-level position, you tend to just have less ability to promote over time, so that's why we have those ranges a little bit wider at the upper end of the structure to still allow movement and recognition of good work and pay-for-performance for that good work. So, in addition to moving the structure, which means that we have realigned positions within the structure, we have suggested and recommended new grade ranges, we are recommending that you also place employees in the structure in a way that helps us mitigate compression issues. So, if we were just to align the minimum pay and move employees to the new minimums, we might see people that have been here for five years making the same amount as somebody coming into the organization at the minimum. And we feel like there's a lot of value for somebody working here five years and being able to understand your systems and your processes and your people and how you do things and how things get done here. So, we wanted to make sure we recommended pay adjustments for your current employees in alignment with their tenure and their current position. So, we're recognizing the fact that there is value for their work here over the time they've worked and have made recommendations on those adjustments. So, for individuals that have been here less than a year, we are recommending they are placed at the minimum of the structure in their grade. For those that are here one to three years, we're recommending they're placed 8% above the minimum. For those that have been here three to five years, we're recommending 15% above the minimum. For those employees that have been here five to seven years, we're recommending placement at the midpoint, which is part of your O.E.I. to target individuals being at the midpoint of their range within five to seven years of service to the city. So, that would align with that. And then for employees who have been here for seven to 10 years, we're recommending midpoint plus 5%. Any employees that have been here longer, additional consideration may be needed for them. So, as we shaped our recommendations, what you see here on this slide represents the percentage of employees and their pay adjustments based on those recommendations. So, 23% of your employees will see no adjustment in the current system in terms of just getting them placed into your new system with these recommendations. That doesn't mean that they're at the max of that grade, it just means looking at their tenure today, we are recommending that they're placed at their current pay. They would be eligible for future increases going forward. In the new structure recommendations, only six of your employees were at the max of their recommended grade, so most of your employees will be able to see the ability to move up in their pay grades. So most of your employees will be able to see the ability to move up in their pay grades. Employees who would receive up to 10% additional of their current pay, that falls in the 24% range. Employees, there were 28% that were in the 11% to 20% range, 12% in the 21% to 25% increase range, and then 12% who would get a 25% or greater increase in pay. And those numbers sound pretty significant, and I recognize that. As I worked with HR and leadership, we talked a lot about this because in government, we have to be really cautious with how we do things and how we look at pay increases and how we fund all of those things. So I recognize that. The challenge here is in the talent space that we're in, you're at risk of employees leaving and making money elsewhere. And we recognize that the increases that you've been making over the past several years have not necessarily kept up with current market averages. So for some time, you may have been discounting employee pay because the increases of 2% are just not keeping up with general increases we've seen over time. Another one of our key recommendations is moving toward a system to reward employees for the hard work that they're doing and differentiating performance levels. So currently, you have a system where there are three different levels of performance, and we would recommend we stay with those three different levels. We are recommending employees who, when evaluated and receive a needs improvement rating, they would receive no increase. So if someone is placed on a performance improvement plan and they need to improve their work performance, we're recommending no increase for those employees in that review cycle. So this would be their annual review cycle. For employees who are really proficient at what they do, and I would expect this to be the bulk of your workforce, where they're showing up, they're doing good work, they're performing as we expect them to do, they would be in that middle category. And then you would have fewer employees in the upper category where they're regularly exceeding expectations. But we would differentiate that level of performance to some degree. In keeping with the OEI recommendations to move people quicker through the lower levels of the pay structure to get them to midpoint by five to seven years of employment, we want to have higher percentage increases for employees until they reach the midpoint of their pay range. So that's why you see the differences here on this chart. For employees in the proficient category that are from the minimum of the pay grade to the midpoint, they would see 4% of an annual increase when they see their annual review. For employees that are midpoint to maximum, they would be at a lesser increase of 2.5%. For employees that are in that upper category, so they regularly exceed expectations, we want to recognize that additional performance that they provide the city. Those that are in the minimum to the midpoint range would receive 5% on an annual basis in their increase. Those that are midpoint to maximum would be slightly under that at 4%. And then we're recommending that once the employees would hit the maximum, they would get a one-time adjustment on an annual basis, 2.5% or 4% based on what their rating is for their evaluation. As part of all of our information gathering, we surveyed employees, what they thought about benefits, what they thought about pay-for-performance and pay and those different kinds of needs that they have related to total rewards. 90% of your employees agreed that employees should receive different levels of compensation based on work performance. So employees support this kind of model where there is some differentiation of work performance and the pay that they get related to that. Oftentimes, organizations may have just a step system or they award just a sec cola, and that would not differentiate performance levels, and that can decrease morale over time if you aren't able to differentiate those performance levels and the pay that goes with that. Related to employee benefits and other pay options, we did look at data from other local governments around a number of different factors. So things like boot allowance or shift differential in terms of other pay options, but also the employee benefit side of that, too. The key areas where we felt like you could potentially be more competitive if you wanted to make some changes to your benefits structure would be focusing on providing additional match in the retirement option. So I recognize that with capers, you have some restrictions on what you can do with that, but certainly on a deferred compensation with your 457, providing an employer match could be a way for you to be more competitive as you look at those options in your benefits. And the other piece that we're seeing so much attention to these days is having the ability for employees to have work flexibility in how they do their work, when they do their work, can we have shifting or adjusting schedules. I think from what I heard, the city does really well at that and trying to accommodate that. It may be something just to further reinforce with supervisors and with managers and make sure that they're able to respond to that as needed. And then related to that, being flexible in terms of paid time off systems. You offer very competitive paid time off. The couple of suggestions that we would have would be to consider if there's a buyback option so that employees can sell time that they haven't used. And that was recommended by some employees in our employee survey that we conducted. And then also consider if there is more front-loading, if you will, to the time off policies. So people have to accrue their time before they're able to use that. So if you're a new hire, it takes you a little bit longer to get enough time to be able to take time off. I didn't feel strongly about making those as set recommendations, but certainly considerations for you just to be more competitive in your employee benefits space. But from what we saw, you certainly provide very good benefits to your employees, and the cost share that you provide on the insurance is very competitive in the marketplace. So with that, in terms of next steps, we would appreciate any questions and we'll take feedback. From here, after you've had a chance to digest all of that, I know it'll end up as an agenda item for adoption for you as the new pay plan, and then it will move to implementation of recommendations. Our HR has recommended, if we can move through adoption of the pay plan, that employee adjustments will occur as of July 1st, so doing a mid-year adjustment and targeting really a June 12th effective date so that that's on that July 1st paycheck. And I think I forgot to mention our total cost, didn't I? So as we made those recommendations, moving your minimums, placing your employees in the new structure, our total cost is going to be $2.1 million on an annual basis. We're doing a mid-year recommendation of those adjustments, so $1.05 million for that initial impact to budgets. And then, of course, that would be incorporated into future budgets since that would be compounded on those budgets.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions for Carrie about the recommended plan or methodology or analysis or comparisons? I do want Jason to follow up and talk a little bit about our implementation strategies, but if there's anything about the study itself that you'd like to ask, please do so.
Yes. Do you know what the percent increase is for that base of employees? So you said the annual impact is $2.1 million. So for example, if the payroll was $20 million, that'd be 10%. What is that percentage increase that this is?
Our total payroll budgeted is $26 million.
Okay, does that include the fire department?
That's a combination of general fund, water, sewer, storm, and the union, yes.
Okay.
So the general fund of that 26 is roughly $21 million. And $5 million then is more on the enterprise utility side.
So when you say that, are those dollars in this number or not? Is it 2.1 over 21?
Yeah, the $26 million is 22 budgeted. The $21 million in the general fund is 22 budgeted. These numbers are not on top of that.
No, I'm still not sure if I know. What are we?
It's about 8%.
About 8% that we're looking at? In your study, you did divide it up by the different number of employees in the, some had percentages, some had salary increases in there. You had three employee adjustments of greater than $30,000. What were the individual increase amounts for those and what percentages were there?
I do not have that data. We'll have to follow up with you on that for just the three.
Yeah.
I didn't bring that detail with me.
Okay, and then we've got the 12 that are going from between 20 and 30,000. And I was just interested on what the percentage increase is in that group.
So the top 15 percentage increases.
Yeah, you've got 12 from 20 to 30,000.
Yeah.
That were going in. And I don't know when the pay increase cycle regularly is for this city. Do you do it all at one time or is it staggered through the year or?
So traditionally, we do a cost of living at the beginning of the year, and then we do the, we used to have a pay-for-performance system a decade or so ago, but when cost of living went down, we weren't able to budget reasonable performance increases. There wasn't much separation between the levels of performance, so we went more to a cost adjustment, if you will, more of a step, I guess you would say, that's pertinent to everybody, but it did matter, and that was usually given on the anniversary date with their evaluation.
So that was just all through the?
Yep, it's spread throughout the year.
So is that pretty much the way you think you're going to keep it after?
We're having some discussion about that.
Yeah, a lot of people moved to that one year.
Just from, you know, it's one thing from the aspect of annual evaluations of employees and that system. We have talked about re-implementing the pay-for-performance system in '23 to get us back into a situation where we're training on that evaluation system and whether or not we would do that all at once or continue to do on the anniversary dates. And that obviously has an impact on, budget impact as to when that's.
Yeah, when it hits during the year. But the proposal here is to put in the paper performance for the next year.
Correct.
Correct. So when we look at those numbers for that, so we have a 2.1 million impact, and if we use the proficient midpoint and the 80% of the cola, that'd be another 8.5%. So it'd be like another 8.5% on the $2 million for another $170,000 that would get added to that. Obviously, some of the concerns I have with it is, you know, what are we doing, especially on like the high end? And I haven't been able to see until I get the numbers what those are. You know, if you're giving someone a raise of $50,000 from 150 to 200, then the next year, they're going to get 8% to 10%. That's another $18,000, $20,000. Now you're looking at, you know, close to $80,000 over that period. I think that's some of the things we need to consider when we're looking at this.
Carrie, if you can bring up that percentage chart, I think we can answer John or Christian Ramada's question, because if he's just looking for those top 15, if you can scroll back to the percentage chart, the orange one that highlights the percentage, there you go. 25% or greater are definitely going to cover your 15 that you just mentioned. Because in order for them not to be in that category, they're going to have to be the example of 46% of their salary. You know, they're going to have to double their salary.
In order to get it.
In order to get it. So you're really, just quick math, I'd say all 15 are in that 25%.
Right, 25% or greater. And again, I like to just see the individual numbers so I can see, do we have any really big outliers within that list?
Yep.
And I know it's not great to ask about people's pays and meetings and everything else, but unfortunately, everyone here gets their salaries published in the Mercury once a year with this year and last year, so it comes out at some point in time. So may have some questions later, but I'll turn it over.
Yeah, I have a few questions. In your document, like I think on paid 16, you have, not 16, sorry, paid 6, where you have the original job title, and this is in your study. By the way, you did a nice presentation. I wanted to comment that it was very clear and succinct to what we are discussing. So you have the original job title, sorry, and recommended job title. So I wanted to know, some of them look like they're simplified, but for example, I don't know how many bio solids lift station technicians we have, if we just have two or more, but since it says in the original job title, it says one and two. And so the second one is senior, and the first one is designated as technician. Are we just taking the ones and twos out of them and giving them just one title? And some of them just have like engineer A3 is just senior. Are they supervising more people? Is that what it implies? Can you just give me more clarification on the title of senior?
Sure. So what we were recommending is if you see the numbers, that means someone is becoming more experienced, more efficient, but they don't necessarily have supervisory oversight. Someone in a senior role may not be officially a supervisor, but they're the one that is directing some of the work. They're the go-to, they're the most senior person that would be able to take over supervision if there was a need for that in the absence of the supervisor. So that would be our recommendations for how we differentiate that.
Okay, because to me, that sounds like it would be, they might be supervising or they might have staff under them. So, you know, some of them have senior and some of them have supervisors. So I guess I just needed more clarification because that also comes with responsibilities and such.
Right, right. The supervisor title would mean they directly supervise and would have influence over hiring or discipline or reviews. The senior title would be more directing work and maybe a lead, if you will, with a lead title.
Okay.
Can I ask a clarification question? So is there only going to be like one senior of anything, or might there be multiple people listed as senior?
There could potentially be multiple senior people within the organization if they have that level of experience.
Okay.
I didn't know if that would create confusion in the title, because the way it's structured now, you kind of know that there might be, I'm assuming, there might be just one technician, lift station technician one and lift station technician two or something like that. There might be more, but my assumption is there's probably one of each under a supervisor.
What we found is there could be multiple people in the one or the two position. It really has to do with how much experience they have, more than anything.
On page seven, let's see here. Again, you have your chart for existing compensable factors. Is it compensable?
Yes.
Okay. And recommended compensable factors. So when I see preparation and training, and then you put it as knowledge, or you have another one that says responsibility for policy development and execution, and you have it under responsibility, but you also have planning under responsibility. To me, the existing one is so clear and defined, and the other one seems a bit more holistic, like they're kind of have to guess in a way what that means.
As you, if we shared with you the breakdown of the different levels in each of those compensable factors, I think it would be more clear. So we can certainly provide that if you're interested. The responsibility piece, we had discussion around because we wanted to make sure we recognize that. that some people have a very significant amount of responsibility in their position based on the nature of their work, but they're not necessarily leading others or supervising others, but they're planning for the entire city, for instance. So that's part of what we were trying to distinguish with the responsibility piece where it is a little bit more holistic, I would say. I think that's, that's a good way to describe that.
Yeah, I think I, just the one word for each of those kind of makes me feel a little uncomfortable because like you said, it means different things.
When you see the breakout of the descriptions within each of those categories, that's really just the high-level overseer title. And we have different descriptors. We have six descriptors within each of those and it's, it's pretty clearly differentiated, I would say.
Okay. I didn't know that. I think if there was an evaluation sheet where they're looking at pay-for-performance, I would assume under responsibility, there's a few more categories. Is that right?
And, and that's not exactly linked. So these are factors we use to look at and evaluate a position. The pay-for-performance would be evaluating an individual's work. So this is how we use the system for classification to assign what that first pay range looks like. How does it move into the wage structure? The pay-for-performance would not necessarily look at these things.
Okay. So if it's a biosolid lift station one and now they're senior, let's say, or supervisor, for each of those categories, there would be more.
More definition around that. And in that case, as an example, the senior biosolids would have a greater amount of leadership potentially and/or responsibility because they may be planning or guiding the work of the others in that group. Even though they don't have formal supervisory responsibility. And we were able to differentiate those levels. Someone that's a formal supervisor versus informal training or coaching of people on their teams.
Okay, so you took away the ones, twos, and threes?
Not in every case.
Okay. All right. I'm just trying to understand how this new one would work when you're looking at classification.
The ones and twos and threes, the differentiator could be more in the experience. So maybe at a two level, you have two years of experience versus at a one level, you have zero experience. But also in the problem solving, it may have increased. So at a two level, I might have a little bit more complexity in my work, so I have to problem solve more readily. At a one level, I'm getting more guidance from the people I'm working with.
So your human resources director and the department heads need to have a clear understanding of what each of those mean.
Yeah, yes. Those certainly are more on the backend administrative side of how we place positions in the structure. And we will provide training on that.
Okay. Just that was, not everybody participated as far as our employees in the survey, but a great majority did, forty-eight percent, you said, participated in it. A performance review every six months, is that right?
The recommendation was to conduct in the first year of employment, a six-month review and provide an increase at that time. But beyond the first year of employment, it would be annually.
Okay. And there was also increases in COLA. I think one of the things on this was, of course, wanted to like to hear from our own human resources at some point as we plan all of this because I want to, you mentioned our benefits are, are very good and, and pertaining to each employee. But when it comes to the retirement fund, it might be lacking a little bit there. And also in, you mentioned student loans and such, and I don't know how we do on, on all of those things. In order to be competitive, if some of these individuals that say get the twelve percent increase or greater depending on performance, there are many, multiple ways to increase the salary. And if we're looking to be competitive, we're also competing with non-government industries and for-profit industries. But the information you gave, if it's in more detail, does it lay out how each of those for-profit industries are doing in the same management position or in some other positions that are equal or?
When we're able to compare, then we can pull the data from our general database, database that shares for-profit data. Not all of your positions map to for-profit world, but a lot of them, we were able to compare.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
I have one, just one question on methodology to see if I've got this right. It's on page eight and it says you looked at Riley County, but it says finance only. Was that limited just to finance?
Yes. So we had selected the comparable organizations broadly and then we invited department leadership to also suggest any additional local governments that they would like us to compare to. And so you see on that list there, Riley County was one where finance indicated they would like us to retrieve that data from Riley County. We did not include that for the rest of the positions.
Jason, I think that's a problem with it because I think all of that should have been included because we're competing with Riley County. I think we lost last year, a couple of drivers from Public Works that went to Riley County because they paid a little bit more. So I, so I would think that's very relevant that, that we should have had great detail on Riley County and also RCPD. Because, you know, whenever we talk about pay, everybody always compares those, the county, the city, RCPD. So clearly, those should have been part of this study.
We did have some data points. I know city leadership had shared with us some of the published salary data and we did look at that after we had already started to make recommendations to make sure your positions were competitive with those. And we felt like that's captured in these adjustments.
Are there other questions from the commission? We'll have some questions probably for our staff, I guess. Okay, Jason?
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. Our financial status or position has changed quite a bit in the last couple of years. There have been a lot of factors that have impacted that. This slide, which is in your packet, is more of the general fund, kind of a profit-loss scenario. And where we wanted to highlight and bring your attention to is what we've done in the last couple of years. In twenty-seventeen, we did have a hiring freeze here within the city. And at that point in time, we recognized our revenues weren't going to meet expectations. Since that point in time, we've had a number of different budget discussions with you all and approaches. But in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, we really saw the, the significant savings. Our general fund cash balance is roughly eight-and-a-half million today. And what this gives us the opportunity to do is move forward with this revenue and expenditure balancing act. For fifteen, sixteen years, we operated a cash balance in our general fund of around two million dollars. We dipped below two million dollars a few times. And then the past three or four years, we've talked to you about where GFOA and other entities operate at. Usually, three good months of operating is set aside in your general fund cash balance. We have a thirty-two million dollar general fund. So roughly eight-and-a-half to nine million dollars is where Governmental Finance Officers Association would recommend we land. We are there. We are there because, as you saw on the previous slide, we had a couple of years of really substantial savings in our general fund. We're also there because CARES money came in, in twenty-twenty. That's federal money that came straight to the city. We documented personnel costs. We documented a variety of different eligible expenses and that money has landed within the general fund. So that eight-and-a-half million is really our balancing point. From here forward, we're proposing to pay for full implementation of this plan and annually adjusting according to this eight-and-a-half million dollar balance. Currently, we have anywhere around four million dollars of the thirty-two million in the general fund is supported by property taxes. The, we are not advocating or suggesting we raise the middle levy. But you can do quick math, thirty-two minus four, there are twenty-eight million dollars coming into the city for the general fund to operate annually. That's our budgeted amount. While property tax are the most reliable, and we've talked to you at length about that too, we also recognize those expenditures of our operations are also within our control. The last couple of years has been a really very evident experience. We have not been fully staffed. And that's very evident in those savings. So we know there are certain things we can continue to do. There's some things we just haven't done. We can continue that trend. That's what we're suggesting to you all to look at not only a combination of where we're at from a general fund standpoint, but annually, really monthly, looking at revenues and expenditures to move this thing forward. The last three years, whether it's savings by our operation or CARES money, are also coupled with another approach and that's on the ARPA side. This is really multi-pronged. I'm not going to sit here and say we're doing this to pay for that million dollars in twenty-two and we're doing this to pay for that two million dollars in twenty-three. It's multi-pronged. There are revenue streams, again, twenty-eight million of it that we're going to keep an eye on and make sure they're keeping up. Possibly, you could get excess sales tax like we had last year compared to the budget. We're in a good position this year moving forward to continue that. ARPA gives us another financial approach that can create cushion for us to operate. Some of the things that you'll be approached with to use ARPA funds in the future will give release pressure on the general fund. Just a quick example, if there happens to be another fire station built within our inventory because of a large economic development prospect, ARPA could be considered for that. You wouldn't necessarily have to go issue more debt. You wouldn't necessarily have to stress the general fund for that expenditure. There are just opportunities out there and there's a list at the bottom of this that are eligible expenses that you can use with ARPA. Baker Tilly suggested we come at this from a three-year approach to leverage the ten million in revenue loss. That revenue loss occurred in Manhattan and it occurred for the city. That's a twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one calculation. That's real. And with that federal money, they're allowing us to really use it in a variety of ways. But our strategy this year would be to basically show two-point-eight-five million in other expenses to free up that cash that we can dedicate towards our capital improvement program and other general services. And again, those other general services are listed there at the bottom that would be eligible. Twenty-twenty-three approach, again, another million in our capital improvement program, two-point-one-five million other general services. Then we would have four million remaining and those would be between really our, our enterprise replacement system, so replacing the AS four hundred and again, another million in those general government services categories. What this does is gives us, again, a lot of flexibility and a lot of cushion to remain aggressive with how we've been approaching a lot of ventures within the city. It gives us that cushion, but it also gives us a sense of we can go look at revenues and expenditures annually and balance this price tag. Carrie mentioned it. We have been operating at a discount to the taxpayer. When we look at jobs and we look at positions, we really wanted to focus on where our people could go. And I appreciate your comment, Commissioner Butler, but I also would suggest the research and the data they have in this is actually better than just looking at Riley County or RCPD. It's looking at multiple cities within an hour or two of where our people could go work today and earn that wage. I can't, I don't know if I can say the exact same for RCPD or Riley County. And their jobs are just not that similar. Yes, you can lose certain individuals that clearly those skills can move over. But this study, to me, peeled it back and really looked at what we have and how we compare. Moving forward, we believe this strategy can be implemented, funded, and keep our talent. Recruit it and retain it. That, those words have been said in this room multiple times in the last three years. You've had multiple department head presentations coming up to the podium and we heard you at the retreat. Ready to move forward. I don't want to sit up here and look in the rearview mirror and just check it off. No, we're ready to move forward. I appreciate AGH's approach. I think it's spot-on. We spent a tremendous amount of time looking at this. Because when, we knew when we were going to get in front of you, we wanted to be able to talk very accurately about the situation we're in and how we're going to move this thing forward. The ARPA approach, one-pronged. We got to get back to that annual look of how we're going to balance this thing. This is something I know staff is probably tired of hearing me talk about. But my department heads are very familiar with this, very familiar. We need to start operating in a way that if we got to dial it back and adjust, we have the flexibility to do so. Our general fund balance is over eight-and-a-half million right now. It's closer to ten-and-a-half. We don't spend a lot of money until the summertime. So we're going to keep a close eye on it. It's likely going to come down. But we are moving in the right direction to be able to implement this strategy and we will continue to manage it in a way that if we need to cut, we need to scale it back, we need to reduce those expenditures, we will.
Go to your ARPA slide.
Yep.
So the, is that million dollars that you've designated for capital improvements twenty-two and twenty-three, is that on top of anything else we've already got in the general fund or is that going to be the limit for capital expenditures that year?
So that is seed money. We have taken a completely different approach with our capital improvement program when it comes to vehicles and equipment. We have, and, and I'm very excited to show you this because now we have a handle on what it is we're talking about for vehicles and equipment. We have a total inventory. We have a total value of that inventory. We have the age of the product, which we've had bits and pieces of information over, over the years. This is a program that pays for these replacements in advance. This will be seed money to help departments phase into their annual operating budget, budget approach to pay for that vehicle ten years out. If you just purchased a vehicle, average life, not going to say every vehicle is replaced in ten, but when you look at it in ten years, we're going to set that money aside annually in our operating budgets to replace those when they're due. Versus walking in and asking for ten vehicles to be replaced, twenty-five per, and it's a quarter of a million dollar hit and we need to raise taxes to do that. We're going to make it part of our operating budget and our operating approach. That's going to be an adjustment for some of our bigger departments. But that's the approach. I appreciate where finance is at with this. We, we have an employee who has experience down in Wichita. This is exactly what they did. They built it in. You take out the guesswork, you take out the debate, you take out the reality of spending more on a vehicle in a year in repair than it's worth. We, we plan for it, we budget for it and we create the reserves. These two million dollar insertions are, are going towards that hundred-and-fifteen vehicles in the general fund, that hundred-and-fifty overall total inventory. The countless pieces of equipment that have just kind of been put on the back burner until we find, you know, a revenue stream. This is a ten-year approach to create that revenue to replace those. And it's something we, we can sustain.
Now you have ten million here. Wasn't the ARPA twelve-point-seven?
Yeah, at the bottom, the two-point-six million would be a. Yeah, at the bottom, the two-point-six million would be available to address, yeah, the commission approach. And some of that, you know, we've talked about creating a process to where people could come and approach you all, talk to you about how to spend that two-point-six. It wouldn't necessarily limit you to be that process if we didn't realize enough request or enough need in the community based on your review and approval, you could obviously move that money into a variety of areas. But that ten million, again, it's what the feds for a city our size basically could count as revenue loss, but we have actually calculated it. We act, I argue with finance, I think we could actually leverage more. I think if you take the three years they're going to give you to calculate that, it will be over ten million in lost revenue.
Yeah, wasn't the ten that's kind of right?
It's kind of minimum, yeah.
So with the ARPA money, ARPA money in our accounts, do we get to over four, possibly four years, do we keep the interest that's earned on it?
No, you can't earn interest on that money.
Okay. You can't?
It's not allowed.
It just sits there.
Yeah. Isn't it a negative arbitrage situation? Does it turn into a negative, or is it just their rules, you can't invest it?
I think there's just still some information out there regarding whether or not you can actually invest it, but at this time, we haven't invested any of those proceeds.
I just meant so many accounts earn interest, even if they're a checking account in some. So I'm just trying to figure out how much we could anticipate would be added to the basic amount.
Yeah, we do have idle cash that we invest annually.
Yeah.
So far, as Raina said, we haven't put any of this in there.
So this would be a separate account? Well, it would help to be a separate account as you try to have to keep track of every dime of it.
Yeah.
And typically, this would be an off-budget account, similar to our CDBG funds. We don't put that in our operating, in our city budget. It's an off-budgeted account because you don't always know how much you're going to get each year. So we do account for it, but it's not really part of a budget process.
So when you say, when you say the ten million from ARPA funds, but you also said ten million in reserve, two separate things, right?
They are.
Okay. How did we get the ten million in reserve? Is that the sales tax, property tax? How did all of that come to be?
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, our general fund cash balance is hovered around two million dollars for several years. In 2017, with the hiring freeze, it started drawing down. We recognized we couldn't continue to spend the money, we were spending more than we were bringing in, which was reducing that cash balance. So in 2020 and 2021, each year in that chart, you can see we saved over two million dollars in each of those years. We also received four million dollars in CARES money in 2020. That has bolstered our general fund cash balance, both of those acts. Not only where the federal money came into play, which was also a calculation of lost revenue and/or expenditures that were made during that time directly to COVID, but we also weren't fully staffed and really cut back in a lot of areas because we didn't have the staff or we couldn't allow the program to occur. So the year we didn't open the pools, didn't open the discovery center, the zoo wasn't open, all during COVID, there were a lot of expenses that just weren't incurred. And if we had vacancies, we didn't bring them back.
Unspent personnel funds is what I'm hearing. When you save four million from CARES funds, was that the one that Riley County gave us when we requested nine million, and that was the four million?
We documented two-point-nine million in fire personnel, and then we had another million come in through the airport that helped with our ops.
Okay, all right. And so that went into the costs, okay.
Yeah, this ten million is obviously different, and as Ron mentioned, we've received half of the twelve-point-six, so we have six-point-three of the ARPA money. We expect the other six-point-three within the next thirty to forty-five days.
Oh, then you'll have twelve.
Then we'll have twelve-point-six.
Oh, so it's not coming next year, it's coming, okay.
Yeah, and it will come within the next month or so.
Okay, then it'll be twelve.
Yep.
And they need to know how we're going to spend it soon, I would assume.
Yeah, on the revenue loss side of it, it's a little, we just need to document it and then provide them that documentation, and that essentially will free up that revenue to be used as we've described. But yeah, every time you go on those quarterly reports, you'll need to document the offsetting expenditure that you have for that revenue.
And our sales tax has been pretty good?
It has. I'm too jaded by 2017, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, so. I want to be optimistic, Commissioner, but I, you know, that crystal ball is hard right now for me to suggest we're going to stay on this upward trend.
No, I agree, I agree. Okay, I see the funding sources and the mechanisms you have in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have, well, several thoughts, but I have a concern. Because we have, this is one-time money, the ARPA money, and once it's gone, it's easy to revert back to old habits. And I just, I want to be sure that we don't and don't know how to get that kind of a commitment, I guess.
You bring up a great point, excellent point, actually. We're not suggesting ARPA be used to fund our people.
Okay.
We are recognizing ARPA is giving both the general fund and other funds the ability to have the cushion to absorb the immediate blow over the next three years of things that are pressing, of things that come to you all as, here's an opportunity, do you want to take it? This money won't necessarily compete then for the general fund money that we're advocating we watch on a revenue expenditure basis to pay our people.
I just know that we always want to support the initiatives. I mean, it seems like there's a capital improvement program item that wasn't on the capital improvement program list for the year. And each time we get one of those items, we all, you know, we want to say yes.
Yep.
We want to do that. It's like the bauble on the tree, we want that. And so we opt to do it, and then, but there's a payday for that accumulating those debts or those projects. And I just think it's easy to get ourselves back into, we still are going to carry the debt that we've accumulated over time, and I'd like to be so happy, but I just, I'm hesitant to jump in the happy category.
It's understandable. I do think.
I mean, that's not got to do with the pace.
No, no, but it is the financial health of the city. And Ron and I debated how much of the bond and interest do we bring into this discussion tonight? You know, I think it is part of it, because there are revenue streams, and there are projects that clearly, you know, compete for revenues. It's not, it's not a foreign type of concept. And when you look at a region agency, or you look at the financial health of a city, once you get past the general fund, you go to the bond and interest, then you go to the utility. Those three funds are truly the indicators of how we're doing.
Right.
And that general fund, again, just for a long time, we have not relied on that property tax to really fund it. And I'm not saying that is a good or a bad thing, but thirty-two million dollars and four of it's really guaranteed? It's not to say the other twenty-eight or roughly won't come in, there'll be something come in, it's just not a revenue stream you can sit there and say, oh yeah, in twelve months, that would be there.
Not guaranteed.
Yeah. So that gives us the concern in the general fund. On the bond and interest side, you do have a lot of revenue streams coming into that as well. And with the 2023 sales tax and with the big five that we've referenced before, there's a pretty committed path there with those revenue streams. But they do impact that overall financial health. I mean, you bring up a really good point.
I think just to expand on that a little bit is that, you know, in the past several years, we've had to rely more on lease purchasing our CIP equipment, and we'd much rather have a cash system that we've designed to set up to pay cash for versus financing vehicles and equipment. And that's kind of our goal. So that will help our overall bond and interest, not a huge amount, but it's a movement in the right direction.
I think we all would, but there's a trade-off kind of thing, so we have to figure out what's going to be, where the pressure's going to be because we're tilting another way, so.
And that CIP process is, there are members of that committee in this room, and it's grueling. That's another one of those meetings I think people are tired of hearing me say what I have to say, because I'm not always that optimistic. And when you get into that level of conversation, it becomes about priorities in a hurry. And once you realize you're not near the top of the priority, you can lose a little faith in your project, your program, or your piece of equipment ever really seeing that capital improvement program. I've made a joke internally, we could have a three-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar budget instead of a hundred-and-sixty and still have to prioritize. There's just a never-ending cycle of replacement. Everything we go out and do, the day we walk away from it, it's deteriorating, and at some point, the community's going to say, you need to replace that. The Grand Mer Roundabout, a perfect example of people in your ear chirping about it, how quickly do we get to that? You know, Casement Road, it's got a very rural feel, got open ditch to handle storm, it's got no curbs, it's a very difficult area for pedestrians. They're, I mean, we could sit up here and name several. They're just project after project after project to bring our community where the expectation is. But you do have to draw the line, and you got to move forward with what, you know, your higher priorities are.
Some of the prior, some of the items always get pushed down and never surface. That's another way to look at it.
That's true, with so many, it's going to happen, for sure.
Okay, so I, my question is, if this doesn't have to do with ARPA, when are we going to be dealing with ARPA to actually talk about the projects that we're going to fund?
So obviously, in the budget strategy, there's an approach to incorporate our revenue loss amount of ten million going forward, and some of the aspects of that, with the recommended two-point-six million, that was something we certainly want to visit with you about on process. There's some pros and cons to that, you know? Do you wait and see from a budget standpoint of why those requests come in? You know, most of our, a lot of our, your boards that are seeking some of that input have already sought it for the budget process. So since it's an off-budget account, similar to CDBG, we kind of, it's a mid-year type thing, so it's something that we might do after that. There's still a lot of pending legislation on some of the rules. I mean, there's still a bill that's passed the House, bipartisan bill that actually passed the Senate, I'm sorry, it's kind of stuck in the House, that was going to give a longer timeframe to use these funds and even more flexibility. So I guess the other aspect is there's still a lot of funds being proliferated by the state and federal agencies trying to get folks to apply for those, and folks are applying for those. So it's one of those things to, you know, what is that community need? And certainly facilitating a process to get that feedback is something we want to convey, and we would approach that through our budget process with you as to a timeline for the, in this case, two-point-six million.
I wanted to look at the projects is what I'm talking about, too, because I think some of them need to be directly connected to COVID, and I want to be sure that we're meeting the need, you know, the community as a whole had a lot of losses, too. So, I don't, so anyway, having said that.
Yeah, I think, you know, your slide there on that ARAP long-term, the way you've got it broken out for ten million, that looks fine to me. I understand the categories, that makes sense. And then it basically leaves two-point-six million up in the air for, you know, whatever somebody decides to do. I think that's a fair split, way ahead of where we were a month ago.
I'd still like to see the breakdown of this.
Just another question on the study.
One million capital improvement that isn't capital improvement.
This is, or tell me if I'm right or wrong, this is just for the people who are on the payroll right now?
Correct.
Okay, so we've got thirty, forty open spots, they're not in any of the calculation for that?
But if, is the money, is that two-point-one million include those positions being filled that are currently empty? Or is it strictly the boost for the current employees we have?
That number just was included for current employees.
So if we hire another thirty people at forty thousand bucks a year, we got to come up with another million bucks?
It would depend on where they're placed in the structure based on their experience, so we've made some recommendations for that, too.
But that's not part of the two-point-one?
Correct.
Okay.
So when a new employee is hired, do they typically, they would still start at the entry level of the step? Or they, you could decide to put them in the middle of the, mid-range, and that would be easy to try to do pretty regularly? I'm just trying to think about the frequency that that would happen.
We've provided recommendations for placement and range based on relevant experience for the role. So someone that comes into your organization with no relevant or related experience for the position would be at the minimum of the pay grade. For someone that has ten years of experience, the recommendation may be that they're placed above the midpoint. So we want to make sure you're competitive to get those experienced individuals and allow you to be able to do that.
So the last follow-up to my question would be, you've got money earmarked in the general fund for those positions to some degree, or did we budget last year based on a hiring freeze still?
We budgeted for.
Yeah, if you could hire thirty people, there's money in the general fund for it.
Yes.
If we don't hire thirty people, we'll have a million dollars extra of unspent salary, in theory.
We'll still have some savings, yes.
Okay.
And we're counting on those savings.
Unspent personnel funds.
I just was going to point out, in your packet, by every pay grade, there's a list of positions. You don't know whether they're filled or not, but that's essentially what they've done for us, put them in the grade, minimum, max, midpoint, so you get a feel for where they're at. If you, you know, we obviously have a current salary ordinance, this would replace it, but you can sit there and go side by side, position by position, and see where that movement has been.
So I was going to say, I think you mentioned there was about fifty-eight employees that have potential, that can potentially retire, they're eligible.
Mm-hmm.
And then next year's forty-something, is that what?
Forty in the next five years.
Forty. So they're probably, I would have to assume if they've stayed here for that long, they're probably on the high end, and, no?
Potentially, just depending upon how long they've worked here.
So if they were to retire, they would kind of fill in those spaces of the, and what we're seeing seems to be the trend is more and more people are retiring on time or on target, and instead of staying for eighty years until they're eighty or seventy or whatever it might be, they're retiring as soon as they meet that time.
Eighty years?
Some people have worked like into their eighties and nineties.
Until they're eighty.
Yeah, I didn't mean another eighty years.
Yeah, I'm just chuckling.
So that's what I'm seeing, is there's a potential for ninety people that are going to be close to retirement or at retirement in the next eighteen months, probably in the next two years. And some of them, you know, will need to be filled, but they're already fixed into this as well. All right, thank you.
We do appreciate the feedback and the discussion. In order to implement this at mid-year, we need to start the process of adopting it. So actually, this is tentatively scheduled for first reading of the ordinance for the new salary ordinance at your nineteenth meeting. So we certainly will provide some of the additional information that you've asked for that, and if there are other... And if there are other issues relative to that, we'd be happy to work and provide that as well.
Yeah, you know, as we look at this, I mean, it's 2.1 million, and I know Jason said probably eight and a half percent, but you were comparing to budget. I think you go actual, we're actually probably in that double-digit category that we're at with like 10%. And then, um...
I know our general fund for last year was 19 million.
Okay.
We anticipate this to be 1.8 in the general fund.
So pretty close to 10, 10% on that. And then we look at going to the next year, if we adopt this schedule for the increase, we're going to put on probably another eight and a half percent. So we're really, you know, inflating things. And, well, part of the reason is there's a lot of inflation, which is one of the reasons it's going up. So when we say we're not going to raise the mill levy, you're probably still looking at a seven-plus percent tax increase, even with the flat mill levy from the way that the appraisals are coming in. So it's not like we aren't increasing taxes. So it's just, and if we, if it hangs on for one more year, that's probably another eight to 10% increase. About that time, probably the recession hits because of all the inflation we've just gone through, and then we're at this high pay scale as we go into it. I think I, a couple of challenges I'd throw out is to look if we don't take a phased approach for the, say, the top three category, big salary increase items, see if that can be a two- or three-year phase-in type of thing. I know I've gone through this in private companies, and that's often done for the highly compensated individuals when we've had this disparity as we make it up over a few years. And then, maybe just a little challenge from a philosophical standpoint, is if we do this, you know, what tangible improvement in city operations can we tell Joe Citizen? What will they notice if we do this?
Well, I would hope that we'd be able to retain more employees.
Right, but what would they notice that, as Joe Citizen individual?
That we're bringing forward a level of service.
Are the potholes going to be done quicker? Are the pools going to be open longer? I mean, typically, again, from private industry, when I invest a bunch of money, I got to tell my boss, what's that improvement that he's going to, he or she is going to notice? Yeah, you've got those turnovers from an operating standpoint. What is it? You don't have to tell me now, I'm just saying, just throwing out a challenge. When someone asks me, when I'm out there in the grocery store and said, what do I, as a citizen, you know, what do I see as the tangible benefit from the investment?
At this point, if we're out of questions for, temporarily, this would be a good opportunity to ask the public if you have any comments you'd like to make this evening. Please come forward.
Hi there.
Hi.
My name is Brendan Smith. I was recently hired over at the water treatment plant and about three months ago. So I have a bit of insight on the job market as of recently. I applied for five jobs and got accepted by three of them. I chose you guys, so you're welcome.
Thank you very much.
I did want to address job loyalty and pay disparity.
Okay.
As far as job loyalty goes, there is a shift in the consciousness among many young Americans recently, that they don't value job loyalty. And there's a good reason.
Don't value what, I'm sorry?
Job loyalty.
Job loyalty, okay.
There's good reason behind that. The reason being, companies are usually selfish. I mean, I think we all know that. So why should, why shouldn't people be as well? So this comes down to, like, for me, and I hate to admit this, because I love the people that I'm working with, I do occasionally surf the web looking for new jobs. The pay is more competitive out there. That's one of the first things that I have to look at. Because the benefits, I'm already a healthy young guy. What's the, there's not a huge point for me to look into benefits as far, because I need to survive. As far as pay disparity goes, a percentage increase for someone making $70,000 a year is much larger for someone making $30,000. So buying that gallon of milk is going to cost twice as much for that 30K person. That's pretty much all I got to say, though.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Please come forward.
Your permission, sir?
Absolutely.
I'd like to bring in the guy who ran the desk, back over there. My name is Mike Edwards. I'm clearly with Sewer Maintenance. Sewer Maintenance Department has those two gentlemen over there, Jeff Brady, Eve Latrell. Travis Potter just stepped out for a phone call. That's my staff.
So that's four?
That's four.
Four.
You're talking about efficiency. We have over 200 miles of sewer mains to maintain, repair, and clean. With more personnel or higher pay, I need to retain these guys because I got a good leadership base for new personnel. So we can be more efficient on sewer calls, maintenance, and the things that you guys are asked at the grocery store. Can't live on rainbows and skittles. Guys keep paid, they work hard. They also assist water distribution because they're shorthanded as well, for main breaks and stuff like that. They're asking efficiency, they're asking for pay. It's that simple. As far as I'm concerned, I'm over here, I'm over 20-plus years in, I've seen good people come and go. I'd like to retain my staff. I'd like to retain them so they can be future leaders in my department. With the pay study and the pay raises, that's going to help them stay. Without it, the efficiency that we have is going to go down. Sewer callbacks are going to go down. Response time, we have a great response time for any sewer call for any edge of town. We need to keep that up. We need to be quick, reliable, and accurate in our sewer calls, and we do. But without that staff, without future personnel, that quality is going to go down. That's what I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Mike Edwards. Would your staff stand up, please? Because we don't see many of you. Uh-huh, okay.
You can drill, Jeff Brady.
Okay.
And it's butters in the back, right? I'll take the phone.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Oh, good. Swimming.
I'm Sydney Baker.
Yes.
And I'm the aquatic specialist. Since you guys like to talk about pools, I thought I'd get up here. Sorry. When I started with the city, I was a seasonal employee back in 2014. We had three guys that ran the pools. One of them retired, one of them moved out of state, and one of them has left the city to start his own business. When I started full-time, we had another three guys. One of them moved to another department that paid higher. Another one was one of the ones I said earlier that started his own company. We rely on institutional knowledge for our operation, much as he's saying that our efficiency is based on our staff that know how to do their jobs. So I think retaining your existing employees is extremely important, and that comes with pay. And you can't do that if you're not paying them competitive wages, because they're going to go somewhere else to the private industry where they can make more money. So that's my two cents. Pools are great.
Okay, you can't leave. Thank you, Sydney, appreciate it. Does anyone else want to come forward?
I'm an extremely nervous speaker, but I work in your customer service department.
What is your name?
I'm Ramona Book Lucas.
Ramona, okay.
Mm-hmm. And I hear a lot of you talking about what people are going to say to you at the grocery store, what you can tell people. And one of the things that I want to stress is that we are all citizens that work for you. And some of us are struggling at the grocery store because of the pay. And everybody that chooses a job at the city, I don't work with anybody who doesn't want to work for the city, who doesn't love the city. Everybody I work with is loyal. The other thing that I would say is that I have worked in HR, I've worked in for-profit industries, and it costs so much money to hire people and to train them. And if you have people who know what they're doing, which I believe you do, you want to retain them. And so I really hope that when you're making these decisions, you remember that the people you're making the decisions for are also citizens who live in the city and work here because we love it, because we love the city. We want to stay working here. We're interested in what's happening here. And it's, the reason people take these jobs is because it's important to them. But you do have to do the numbers in your own house at a certain point. And so it is very important. I hope that you will consider their plan that they work so hard on. So that's what I have to say to you.
Thank you, Ramona.
Thank you.
Seeing no one else, I'll, we'll continue the discussion here.
I, I don't know, I'd be curious. One of the things that, at our church out there, when it comes to health insurance, he stated he's a young feller, health insurance ain't that big a deal to him. I was wondering, we implemented a, in lieu of health insurance incentive. So I don't know if we figure if a single guy aged 26 costs $500 a month for his health insurance, I bet he'd rather have 250 bucks in his pocket to spend than have health insurance. And I don't know if that's something that we're, the capers or anything is, requires us to have that as a, as a benefit. And maybe we could look at allowing people to pick and choose in lieu of some of these things, because that's, that's really, because the problem is, is the plan that we have is very expensive, and we only have the option of one plan, and it's like 800 bucks a month for a single person, or if we could pay them 300 bucks, they're thrilled, we're thrilled. It's a win-win deal, and, and we can do that sort of in, in the private sector deal. What, how is that, is that possible? What are the options of doing something like that? Letting people, it's not a cafeteria plan where you're picking and choosing your benefits with your money, but...
So being self-insured, our approach on insurance is a little different. Got to have participants. And where we also like to go with this is, we sure like you to stay around for 10 or 15 years, because I can guarantee you, within that timeframe, you're going to need it. It's, it's a participation type of approach. If you start carving off those options, you do erode your base, and you will give people the opportunity to, you know, take advantage of it, but eventually, eventually, they're coming. We just had a very lengthy conversation with some of our employees about this, and every year during renewal, we try to re-educate. But it is, it's different, being self-insured and being responsible for all those claims, and going out and working with those entities and those hospitals and those vendors to give you those, those discounts because you have that user group.
And you've got to have the healthy people to balance out the unhealthy people.
You do.
To make everybody's premium reasonable. And that's, that's the problem we're running to, is that they, they need every warm body possible to spread the risk out over more people, so you're in the same boat.
Exactly.
Just like capers, you're, there's no out for paying.
Maybe just to clarify, too, after a couple of the comments, my challenge on the study is more about phasing in, it's on the high end of the study. Also, my question about what is Joe Citizen getting to see, isn't a challenge to someone working in the sewer department. It's a really challenge to the management of the city that we're going to give you these resources. You've got some great people. We give you the pay and everything else. What are you going to do with it that Joe Citizen is going to see out there when it's done? If we answer your call, what efficiencies we're going to see? What's that better service are we going to see? That's my question, that's my challenge.
Yeah, and, and just, I look, I look at it two different ways. You're asking for what will you see? I look at it from a consequence of not doing it. Consequence of not doing it, you've got tenure walking out the door. You've got experience walking out the door. You're trying to then replace it with people who don't have the experience. I understand your question, because you're trying to answer a question in a, in a coffee shop or in passing. And that's a difficult thing to do when you don't truly understand every piece of the, of the puzzle. But, I mean, it...
I put it in this context, yes, I said, what did I, how do I answer the person in the grocery store? Did I meet him in the coffee shop? But in reality, it's what's my fiduciary responsibility? What it is here is the commissioner to get the best result for the city. If your answer is simply, there's no tangible benefit, there's only a tangible downside, that's your answer. I guess I still throw out the challenge.
Yeah, and I, I think looking internally to how we operate, where, yeah, my day-to-day is with department heads who we classify as working department heads. So these are individuals that not only supervise and oversee multimillion-dollar operations, they're generating work product. You don't necessarily see that in every city that you visit or, or a part of. And again, I, I understand where you're headed with it, you know, the tangible benefit versus the non-tangible benefit. But I guess I get to see it every day, and I have a different lens about it than Joe Q Citizen looking for, you know, that, that quick say as to what it is.
Again, it's not Joe Q Citizen. I guess I've managed operations for a long time. I've always had to answer that question.
Yeah, I, I wanted to just comment on that. You know, I looked at this pay scale in detail, and I do sort of lean towards what John is saying on the upper end of it, phasing that. But, you know, if you look at this, you had 26, actually 26 categories, pay categories, and 26 is open. And we haven't mentioned the, you know, city manager's salary because it's not part of this. But, but it's going to directly influence what happens at that upper end. Because if we, if we implement some of the things suggested here, there'll be people getting paid more than the city manager, the way I read it. And nobody said that in public forum, but that's important to consider that. And so I'm not so sure, you know, John's not right on the upper end, and I would draw a line right at like position 22. That's where people start getting paid between 100,000 and 150,000. And the ones below that are less. And I don't have any problem implementing this across the board on those lower. Because I agree with the guys that do the sewer, and I watch them fixing broken water lines when ice is dripping off of them. I mean, those guys deserve a pay raise, that's clear. And, and I think any of the citizens know that, too. They see those guys out there, you know, doing some really nasty work and, and some rotten weather and the, the snowplow operators, all of those guys. But the complaints I hear is really, it's the upper. And I know Jason did take a different approach, but what people tell me is, why are you paying upper management so much when they keep hiring consultants? I mean, we just voted out a, a position for what, we're going to pay $560,000 for a consultant to do the ADA study? So I guess what John's asking is exactly that. We don't, we don't pay a consultant to do the ADA study, we pay our own staff, which is competent at doing that. And that's tough, but, you know, I got some grief on this thing this afternoon at noon from somebody in town about that. But what they're looking at is not the guys fixing the water line or throwing asphalt or, you know, working customer service. I think everybody understands that one fully. They've got some grief with the upper end of it. And, and my question on Riley County, and I agree on some of these, like, you know, we got, we got a police director, what's he getting paid in, in relation to the city manager or our fire chief? And you got responsibility things. And I, I think we need to, you know, we need to look at those. And, and so that's, that's part of, you know, before we do a final vote on this, because I'm, I'm 80, 90% sold on the concept here for the majority of the people that work here. But, but we got to come to grips with this upper end, you know, you know, balancing. That, that's where the problem is. And, and then I, I had some other comments, you know... And, and then I, I had some other comments, you know, there was a summary of recommendations, so I think it's on page fifteen in here. And it, it's got some things that I think the, the city ought to really look at. One of my big things, and everybody knows I'm a, I like the Deming management model. So one of the things that I think we should consider, and it goes with that health thing that you were talking about, Mark, is, is just toss out the sick leave and all these different leave things and go with paid time off. About half the companies in the United States have done that. And paid time off is, you, you get a certain amount of paid time off days, use them for whatever you want. If you're sick, fine, use them for that. If you want to go fishing, use them for that. And then allow people to save a certain amount of those. There's a cap, and don't allow people to just sell back PTO time, make them take vacation because it's pretty much been proven people need to take vacation and not sell that back. And then, you know, I like this recommendation that, you know, when you retire, any PTO time you have left, you could convert it to medical premium discount when you retire. I think that makes sense. But there was a list of things here, and that's one that, yeah, I really think we should look at, is paid time off. And then the other thing I would do, and I know this is radical, it's part of, and I've mentioned this to Ron over the years, part of the Deming method, is I'd throw out these evaluations. You know, Dr. Deming said they're useless, they cause more harm than good. And when you take surveys, everybody says, yeah, they're great, but why is that? Because you assume you're going to be rated the top guy in the department. But, you know, I've worked for forty-five years having to rate people, you know, in the army and stuff, and we had goofy rules like that. I could rate one lieutenant number one, and the other three were not number one. So every time we did an evaluation, you had one happy guy, three unhappy guys. And that's what essentially happens. And so, you know, the Deming approach is, you just don't waste time on it because supervisors are pained by having to do it. It takes a lot of time in HR. Just chuck it. And what you do is, you, you give people raises based on longevity and retention and doing their job. And if they don't do their job, you get rid of them. You got a discipline system for that. And it just simplifies it all, and it'll save you a whole bunch of time and money. And I'd recommend looking at that, you know, and there's enough stuff, you know, written on those things. And then there's a number of other things, you know, in here, we've got things like provide pet insurance. I'm not sure I would buy into that, providing pet insurance. That's not, not a good one. Or repayment of student loans. I, I wouldn't be in favor of that, you know, either. And I, I also don't like the idea of a sliding scale for insurance premiums, you know. Because that's like, again, that's not fair, that's not market-based. You're, you're paying for insurance, you know. And it doesn't need to be a sliding scale because somebody makes more than somebody else. I'm not, I'm not big, I'm not big on that. So. So generally, I'm in favor of it. There's some little drill-down specifics that I'd like the staff to consider, like John has mentioned.
So just to give my perspective on some of those recommendations, I think HR probably will work with staff on some of those recommendations. We certainly don't know the needs of each employee, whether it's pets or children or student loans. It's, it's better to have more options than fewer options to see how people want to do it. As far as insurance for our young individuals, my son just had unexpected surgery in New York. And if he didn't have insurance, that would have cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. So you just never know, even if you're a healthy, vibrant young person who thinks they're invincible, anything can happen any day. So I definitely feel insurance should be a priority, and I'm glad we are taking care of that part of it. Evaluations, I think, are also instrumental, not for necessarily pay increases or promotions and all of that, but for your own performance, where you need to improve, if there should be an intervention, if there should be mentoring going on, if most people are very hard-working folks and feel like they're doing the right thing and working hard. But sometimes they just may lack a certain skill or two to get to the next level. And I think those insightful conversations are what evaluations typically provide. And that's what they did for me as a public school teacher. I enjoyed my evaluations with my principal, so I knew where my gaps are when somebody's observing you and actually telling you, here are some things I see that you might not be seeing. I think that's extremely important. And it helps people that want to continue growth and their own personal growth and professional growth in those professions, and maybe go on to get other certifications or degrees or whatever it might be. I do feel they, they provide some value to it. As far as administration, I've never been in any business where people love their administration. Never. They don't like them for a variety of reasons, whether it's pay, whether it's because they are hard on them or easy on them or have their favorites, whatever it might be. I think this goes with us. Millions of, hundreds of people don't like us because they think, you know, we're doing all of these things. So I feel administration is one where you're doing your job, and you may or may not be liked, but that's not your job to be liked or disliked. It's to make sure you're running a city efficiently with everything that you have in place, whether it's processes, procedures, especially employees. So I feel like there is something to be said for that type of oversight and responsibility in management. So I think we need to look at that from a, a broad perspective when we make this decision, at least for the pay scale. Thank you. I'm concerned we can't afford all the student loans that people have. It'd be put on a wish list, but I'm not sure we can do that, and maybe the feds will take care of that. But I don't see us being able to do that. I wondered about the bilingual pay recommendation. Do we actually, how many positions and do we have positions that require bilingual talent?
We don't currently offer that or advertise for that.
Yeah, I wondered about the level of proficiency.
Yeah, excuse me. To have that.
I was wondering about, I was, when I read the report, I was wondering about the level of proficiency and how to require that. Just because you took a year of Spanish, you know, doesn't mean a lot. But I do, I, I do support the tuition reimbursement program that we have and the recognition of employees, the longevity and most everything here. I don't know about the mobile home. I think everybody's got a mobile phone these days. I don't know how to level that out because I have an unlimited plan. I just decided not to ever, not to mess with it again. So, but I, I think that this has a lot of merit, and I want to encourage us to, to go forward with it. And thank you for coming this evening, Kelly.
Carrie, while you're here, sorry. Any follow-up observations that you'd like to make? Just a comment I'd like to just express to the commissioners is just, one of the issues we've faced over the years is compression between different levels in our organization. And that, that becomes an issue with phasing versus those that are already tight against each other. So whether you draw the line here or here or here, that's an issue we have to try and get by fairly. And so that's something I would bring to your attention. And I, I think I forwarded lots of emails from different department heads at four AM in the morning. So maybe they're not out working elbow-to-elbow with those response crews that are working twenty-four seven. They're certainly aware of it and keeping us informed about it. So some of those are just not observations that people see, and they have an assumption that they make. But Carrie, any, you know, there were quite a few comments on different benefit programs. And obviously, you're here, we'd like to take your expertise. So any comments that you would have relative to what you've heard?
Sure. We didn't spend as much time on the benefits because, again, you're very competitive, highly competitive with your benefits. So those are just suggestions to consider if you want more choice, more opportunity for employees, and to appeal more broadly. Back to some of the comments around the health insurance and employees not taking that out if they don't have a need for it, that creates some additional issues, even if you could do that if you weren't self-insured, just in terms of some of the requirements that we have to provide health insurance. And are we trying to encourage people to not take it by paying them in a different way? There just are some gray lines with that that we have to be cautious around. And frankly, we want people to be healthy, so we don't want to discourage them from taking your health insurance that may increase your costs over time anyway. In terms of why we recommended a non-phased approach, we did consider that. We had some discussion around that. Should we have a phased approach? Should we prioritize certain positions? Should we stop at a certain level in your pay structure because certain people are making more money and they're more comfortable with absorbing some of the inflation? We didn't feel like that was the right recommendation because this study indicates that those individuals are not paid as competitively for the work that they're doing, and they can leave, too. So we felt like it was important to recommend an across-the-board increase regardless of the level of the position, and that would be more fair for all of your employees. Jobs are valued at different levels for a reason, and we have those compensable factors to help support how we internally value those and make them also align with that market, external competitiveness, too. So we thought through a lot of those different things as we evaluated that recommendation. But ultimately, feel like if you lose individuals, whether that's an entry level, sewer crew, customer service, aquatics, high-level management, that's an impact to the city at all of those different levels. So we wanted to make sure our recommendations help support your ability not only to respond to those urgent calls, but also to manage the city effectively. I appreciate your time, your attention. I think you had a lot of thoughtful comments, so thank you for being able to present tonight.
One last question, or not, not a question, just a comment. It's like, we've had this, we've had pay studies before, and we were always shocked. And so we tried to phase them in, and then we'd get one or two years into it, and then it'd go away. And, and the thing that's different this time is we actually have some money to, to implement it, and hopefully, at least for a couple of years, anyway. And so this is, like we did with the fire department, whatever, they're trying to get the, the starting, the early, the lower-level people up to a speed quicker and faster to keep them around. I think the plan here, we, we actually have the money with the ARP and, and savings of, of, end-of-the-year savings and cash balances to actually implement. And so that, and the problem with phased-in stuff is that you never catch up because by the time you got the third phase in, now you're three years of inflation behind or cost, unless you throw in the cost of living stuff. But, yeah, it's a big hit, but it's, I think this is the one time we can maybe actually do it right. And then, assuming there's no big recession or decrease of sales tax, we should be able to get it in place. And then it becomes the problem to worry about in twenty oh, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six as to how we're going to maintain it. But hopefully, if all of these things we've got going on across the city pan out, hopefully, well, the economy will be boosting things up enough to where it will be able to generate property tax, sales tax, everything enough to kind of keep it going at that point. We'll, we'll see.
I'd like to also just underscore that we appreciate the employees that we have, and we think you do a, a really good job. And so this discussion tonight is not to damp, dampen our, your perception of what we're talking about. We have, I think we have given raises in the past and tried to keep our city employees at a respectable level. And I worked at K-State for a long time, and they didn't give raises for year after year. And so the city, it's been refreshing to be at the city where I feel like we value employees. So at least that's my perspective. If you want to talk to me, you can. But thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you.